Yeah, they took it.
I thought they-
Here, if you'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, which is led by trustee DeBoer.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands,
Recording in progress.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you that are joining us on Zoom, the only thing you missed was the roll call. All members are present, and we just did the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, we will have public comment for anybody that would like to speak. Please step towards the podium. There's no one that would like to step towards the podium? Do we have anybody that would like to speak on Zoom? No one. At this time, we will move to our first item on the agenda. Darlene Igle has worked for the Village of Heartland for nine years. She's done an outstanding job running elections and doing many, many things, including the hometown celebration parade in her time here. She is retiring. It is well deserved. While it's sad to see her go, it is well deserved, and it's been earned. And I guess we have to let her. So with that being said, I would like to read a proclamation to Darlene.
In recognition of nine-plus years of service to the Village of Heartland by Darlene Igle, I read this proclamation. Whereas administration employee Darlene Igle has loyally served the Village of Heartland residents for over nine years as village clerk, having been hired on May 12, 2014. Whereas Darlene Igle has provided excellence in customer service as she filled the role of village clerk, successfully completing nine years of municipal elections, attending and maintaining minutes for all village board and other board meetings, assisting and comforting citizens in getting cemetery plots, and updating village records into easily accessible electronic formats. Whereas Darlene Igle has demonstrated dedication to Heartland's residents by providing guidance and assistance to residents with respect to all aspects of every election. Whereas Darlene Igle has been an asset to our community, and while she will be missed, her retirement after nine-plus years of service is well deserved. Now, therefore, the village board for the Village of Heartland hereby proclaims congratulation and thanks to Darlene Igle upon her retirement and encourages all residents to join in expressing our tremendous gratitude for her service. This is dated this day, the 26th day of June 2023. Signed by myself and the village manager, Ryan Bailey. Darlene, thank you for all of your service.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Darlene will be including her comments and her speaking to announcements. The next item, does anybody have anything to add to that if they would like? Considering it's coming from the whole board. The next item on our agenda is consideration of village board minutes from the June 12, 2023 meeting and the special June 5, 2023 meeting.
I'll make a motion and approve the village board's minutes of June 12, 2023 and special village board minutes of June 5, 2023.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from both the June 12 and June 5 meetings. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of vouchers for payments in the amount of, sorry,
I'll make a motion to approve vouchers in the amount of $197,593.88. A second?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $197,593.88. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have a consideration of a Class A liquor license for the flower garden to expire June 30, 2024. If I'm not mistaken, this is a renewal.
This is a renewal, and the original information from the last meeting had the agent listed. Correctly, staff has confirmed that the agent is Jamie Williamson for that renewal. All other documents are on file and in correct order.
I'll make a motion then that we approve the Class A liquor license renewal for the flower garden to expire June 30 of 2024.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve that Class A liquor license for the flower garden. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a third reading and adoption of bill for an ordinance number 05222023-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-3 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to park hours with penalty.
On lines 13 and 14, we added Nixon Park hours shall be established and posted from time to time, which may differ from the hours applicable to all other village parks. And then also on lines 18, 19, 20, and 21, the police department wanted some verbiage in there for violations and penalties. And down below, it explains the first offense penalty and the second offense penalty. That is the changes on 70-3.
Question for me. Line 15, Dave, do we need the Bark River Park there as well?
Well, it's put down there as softball, so that's not-
Well, I understand, but we play softball at other parks too. But I'm just wondering, because, you know, if the game goes into extra innings and then they have a deadline of, say, closing at 10 o'clock, and they go into extra innings, what, you know, do they have to quit or?
That is up to you. That's-
I don't think, I mean, I don't, I think-
I don't see it being an issue because the main softball park is Mark River. If it's, it's just a rec game if it's anywhere else.
So what would be helpful? This is a first reading, so we can tweak this.
It's a third reading.
Third reading.
Sorry.
I don't, that's fine.
It is a third reading. We don't have to pass it on the third reading either. If there's tweaks that possibly need to get made, it's not mandatory. The ordinance simply states that we have to have the three readings unless there's a suspension. I'm just letting everybody know it's not mandatory that this gets passed tonight. If there's possible tweaks to get made, we can, I'm just letting everybody know what's on the table.
If that's the only park that we play softball in, whether it be boys or girls, then that's fine. I mean, that's the lit park, so that's really the only one that's going to cause an issue.
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, I'm fine with it. Okay, I'm fine with it.
Anybody else with anything on the ordinance?
I'll make a motion then to adopt the bill of ordinance of number 5222021-1, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-3 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to park hours with penalty.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the ordinance 052223-01, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-3 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to park hours with penalty. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of a third reading and adoption of a bill for an ordinance 05222023-03, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-5 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to allowing the sale of fermented malt beverages within specific land areas.
Again, this is brought to you by the park board, the village attorney, police department, and staff. What was changed here, this is in reference because there was nothing stated in here about the beer garden, so the village attorney also wrote some verbiage in here for that. So on lines 17, 18, and 19, it's restated that the park board may allow fermented malt beverages to be possessed or consumed within specific parkland areas in assurance of a permit allowed under Heartland Ordinance 6-66 during a special event such as a community celebration, gathering, assembly, or function. And then also under number three, lines 20, 21, it says the park board may allow fermented malt beverages to be sold, possessed, consumed only within specific parkland areas for which the permit has been duly granted by the village board under all applicable provisions of Heartland Ordinance Chapter 6, Alcohol Beverages, Article Number 2.
Thank you.
I guess I'll make the motion that we adopt the bill for an ordinance number 05222023-03, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-5 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to allowing the sale of fermented malt beverages within specific land areas.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve on third reading here, 05, ordinance 05222023-03, an ordinance to amend Chapter 70-5 of the Village of Heartland Municipal Code pertaining to allowing the sale of fermented malt beverages within specific land areas. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have items that have come to us from the June 19, 2023 Plan Commission meeting, items related to updates to the zoning code. This is a first reading. First reading for a bill of ordinance number 06262023, an ordinance creating 46-090, 46-910, and 46-911 of the Village of Heartland Code of Ordinances regulating hotels and motels and amending 46-1, 46-466, 46-469, 46-491, 46-494, 46-516, 46-519, and 66-14 of the Village of Heartland ordinance. Anybody have any questions on that first reading from what was in the packet? If anybody does, you can contact the village. We can, obviously, being first reading, if anybody has anything on that, they can call Plan Commission members, contact the village, Ryan Bailey, contact myself. Any questions that you may have, feel free to reach out with them. We will move to our next item. That first writing, reading is considered complete. We have consideration of setting a date of a public hearing for August 14, 2023. This comes from the Plan Commission asking the village board to please set a public hearing for the, this public hearing would be for the quarry and the rezoning. The quarry project that's going forward. It was requested to set this public hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the date for the public hearing for August 14, 2023 for the quarry project.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve a public hearing for, on August 14, 2023, for the project that's going on in the quarry and the items that were, that fell under what I just listed in the previous item with all of those different changes to the code.
That included the rezoning, correct?
Yes. Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of setting a date for a special village board meeting related to fire department. Earlier in this meeting, we approved minutes for a special board meeting that was held at the firehouse. The fire department wanted to present to us things that they find or stress that are concerns to themselves and what they see as serious concerns. I do want to set this meeting, but I think it's part of this meeting. I just want to reiterate for the village. Something that came from that meeting was that when second and third calls come in at the same time, that there's times where Heartland has to depend on mutual aid, meaning the surrounding communities that are around us. Heartland is a municipal department. Heartland is a municipal department where we take care of our own. And we have for a long time, even when others have merged and things like that. And while first calls are being handled in an extremely good manner, in my opinion, it's in a very good timeframe. Not only are police there in a very, very fast amount of time for almost any call, including any major fire we've had, or a lot of the EMT events, police are there. I don't know the exact time, but they're there very quickly. But even fire gets those trucks out and ambulances out, and they're at calls in a very, very good amount of time in first calls. But it's on second calls and third calls where it's not guaranteed that it may be a longer period of time before fire gets there. But the possibility is there that it could be a longer period of time. So we're going to set a meeting to sit down and address those issues. And as a village, we have to decide, are we going to, are we funding to make sure that we get to the first call, which is the majority of the calls? Are we getting to the first calls on time? Or are we, or do we want a department that can cover first, second, and third calls? Everything that comes to us as if we're isolated on a ship so that we can take care of everything and not have to rely on mutual aid as much and only in an absolute, almost never happening situation? As they presented to us, it's happening right now about, if, was it? I want to say once a week where mutual aid has to cover because they have multiple calls at one time. I just wanted to let people know because I know there was some talk in the village of talking about dire need, stretched to their limits, and this goes for police and fire. I know, I mean, I've just seen this on social media and stuff, and I want to stress to the public. When it comes to what this, my understanding, and I'm only one person, but what I've watched over the last six years, what the board was prepared to do having a municipal department. We're not a merge, we aren't Western Lakes, we aren't Lake Country Fire. As a municipal department, we're making sure that we get out on the first call every single time. When we get to that first call, we're then relying on mutual aid. If, and this may be a bad example, and it's not meant to be sexist in any way, shape, or form. If you have a mom that's home with children and something catastrophic happens, the mom, let's say, or the dad, it doesn't matter. One of the parents is there and they take care of it. And if something happens to another child while that's going on, yes, they have to call whoever might be gone at work and have them come in or call a neighbor. I've heard many people say, come on, people, it takes a village here in Heartland. The best thing for our dollar, I believe, is relying on that mutual aid and making sure we get those first calls done every single time. But that's what we're all going to have to talk about and decide. And those are going to be some tough decisions. Because maybe we're taking a shift in our dynamic, and maybe we're not, but it is something that we have to decide on. But fire department does believe that we should be providing more assurance on second and third calls that may come in at the same time. Right now, we're funding a department that can make sure that we get to the first call every single time. And making sure we cover every single call without the, the aid of mutual aid will be pricey, no doubt about it. So if anybody else has anything they want to add, I know that we were all there, please do. And, but we do need to set this meeting, and we will have to come up with some type of an agenda. We'll work with fire on that agenda, but also if you guys have anything to add that you want added in there, please, you know, speak up or call the village and say, I want this added on, or call myself. But this is an important issue. I mean, it's been in the paper, I've had a few calls on it. I, I don't know if it's completely, I'm getting a little worried that there's some information that's just flowing out there, but I am starting to hear citizens that are saying, oh, my God, we're on the brink. This is really bad, and I want to stress to people. We just sat through a meeting where, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it's, what, three minutes and thirty-one seconds? First call is three minutes and thirty-one seconds on average. That means that they're getting there pretty quick. Heartland is safe.
Yeah, I think statewide and countrywide, it's a, it's kind of a growing problem or just change that we need to address and figure out how to manage. You know, it's multifaceted. Volunteerism is dropping off. People are not allowed to leave their jobs like they were able to maybe in the past, and we're growing. And, you know, there's, there's an older community here too that requires some attention, maybe that we didn't have before. So some of the calls we're getting are for places like some of the, the homes in the village that we've got to go to that maybe historically we hadn't had to go to. So it is, it's multifaceted. I think it's, it's good that we're going to be sitting down and talking through and trying to figure out a way to address it.
Something else, are you done?
Yep.
Something else that we need to be aware of. It's not like it was back when I was a little girl growing up here where if you wanted to volunteer, you showed up and they showed you how to use the fire hose, and there you go. There is a lot extensive training for the fire truck, for all parts of the fire truck, the EMT. We're talking, I think they, was it two or three years of classes? Paramedic, three years. So there's a lot that goes into it nowadays, more than ever before. And that's why I, I believe that we have less people volunteering like they used to. And local people volunteering has almost come to a halt. So that's why the cost is going up. But I would like to see us keep our fire department and somehow work this out that it, it benefits everybody.
Thank you. Anybody else? So with that, go ahead.
Question here, I'm guessing, but do we want to try to do this on the night of a board meeting? Like try to have a shorter board meeting schedule and then have this after that? Do we want to have a special day for this?
We, we could do that. However, the most difficult part of that is when we have things come up for the board meeting. It's really tough to just push them off. And it would, while sometimes it sounds easier, it, it is up to you guys. We kind of just set this as preliminarily. So there's no necessary reason, I don't think, on the, yeah, see, we didn't even put a date. We just said, set a date. You know, this is consideration of talking about it. We don't have to set that date tonight. We could ask our clerk to send out a poll of what's the best day. I don't think that's, I mean, you don't have to, you usually don't mind doing that too much as long as people respond, right? We could do, I mean, that's what we're talking about here today. On what we do, do we figure out, like, when are people at it? I would like to see everybody there. So I would rather, even if we couldn't get it done in July, I would rather have it when we're all able to be there. It, I, it's an important enough issue that's been blown up in the news, and I don't mean that in a bad way, but I mean, it's really been out there. And I think that there's a lot of information that have some people somewhat scared. And, and I want to make sure to stay ahead of that. If people are scared, there, there's nothing wrong with that. But I want to make sure that they're scared because they know, because they're getting the actual facts and not that they heard on the street, oh, my God, we're in serious jeopardy here, because we're not in serious jeopardy. Not right now, we are not in serious jeopardy. Calls are getting handled in a very quick fashion. So it's kind of up to us.
And also, the public is, is invited to attend that meeting.
Oh, all meetings of the board.
I know, I just want to make sure they know that they are welcome to attend.
Of course.
Yeah, I was just going to add that, you know, it's very clear that, you know, the volunteerism is down in municipalities across the state. And it's, it's a big change from what might have been in place ten years ago, as soon as ten years ago. So there are some definite things that need to be talked about and addressed in order for us to continue to make our village secure. Just have open discussions about what does it take for us to, to work with our fire department, to give them adequate staffing and to make that happen? So I, it's, it's a must.
I, I agree with you. And I think the reason that it needs to happen, I think, goes both ways, and this isn't a fun conversation. But it goes both ways because let's say the list is this long, where we may say, no, we're going to go to this point. That keeps the village safe. I know you want this, but we're going here. Or we say, yes, we need to go this route to prepare for, this is where we're going to go in the future. The village board has done some things where unfortunately it didn't work, but where, I mean, I've sat here for presentations where it's like, if we do this, this will fix everything. If we do this, this will fix everything, but unfortunately it hasn't. And now we're talking possibly going towards, you know, a more of a full-time department or where people are paid in a different way so that they just stay at the firehouse, you know, that kind of thing. So it's absolutely mandatory that we get this. It, it's crucial that we get this meeting, and I do agree with that. So that we can all sit down and talk and see, the board needs to say where we're willing to go or how far we're willing to go, and fire needs to let us know, hey, this is what we think we need. So because we can't start addressing it until we know what we need.
Also, the, the unknown variable of that shared revenue increase from the state that we don't really know the full impact of that yet and how that's going to hopefully benefit the situation.
That's still getting kicked around.
Yeah, right. So there's lots of moving pieces.
So we can either set a tentative date right now that we get on a calendar or we can hold, we could hold this item over until the next meeting. So it would be a postpone until the next meeting. We can look up whatever date that is. But in that meantime, we could ask that village staff does a poll, make sure everybody's in town and that everybody can make the meeting. And everybody will just have to keep an eye out for that and respond. But I mean, anybody can make a motion for whatever they think is best to, to do. That might be the best way to make sure everybody can be here. We also have to check with fire, make sure chief.
That's what I was going to say, you know, we, we can make it, but if they don't, then it's a moot point. So I, I think we should, or I'll make a motion to postpone a special board meeting with the fire department until a survey goes out and then reconvene and make a decision at our next board meeting and make sure that not only us as the village, but the person at the fire department that are pertinent to be there to give us the information and have healthy discussions are there as well.
So that would be July tenth would be the next village board meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to have the staff basically survey to see when proper fire personnel, staff can be at the meeting, including chief, and when the members of the village board can all be available to meet for a meeting. It may be possible that that is on a village board meeting night, or it may have to be a different night. We're going to try, our most important thing, I think, is that everybody can be there. And I think that it'll be okay that we do that meeting right here in our village hall room. Is that, would you agree, Rick?
Yes.
Okay. So it was moved and seconded. Hopefully you got that whole motion, I think, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Now we have consideration of an appointment of John Leishman to the Police and Fire Commission by myself to the board. I'm, I'm hoping that you'll approve him. I think he'll do a fantastic job. He's expressed, he is in the house. He's expressed a sincere interest, and it sounds like he'll be dedicated to this position. I like to wait one month, especially after someone passes away. This is to replace, you know, God rest her soul, this is to replace Sue Lupnow, who served a very long time on the Police and Fire Commission. I'm hoping to have an approval. John, if you'd like to step to the podium and, and give a brief background on yourself and, and why you're, why you were interested and eager to be on this board, please feel free.
Thank you, President Penestil, I appreciate it. Thank you, Billy Strasburg, for taking the time to consider my nomination. I believe you all have my biography, but I'll just give you a quick, a few key points. Though I'm not from here originally, I was born in Madison, Wisconsin, and I grew up in Fall River, which is about an hour away from here. It's a small village in Columbia County, so I very much get the small town feel. I was a okay, I was an okay, you know, high school athlete, and then went to play ball at college. That is where I met my wife Abby. And then I began working for Congressman, former Congressman, not former Congressman Jim Sensenbrenner. And through my work there, that is where I grew to learn to love and really enjoy every minute I got to spend out in Lake Country. Spent a lot of time in Heartland, particularly in that room right over there, Congressman's Town Hall. So in addition to that, I've held several other jobs that have been public-related, we'll say. So I've seen some of you at various community events or, you know, at your doors or what have you. So I'm very excited to be considered for the Police and Fire Commission. I think that strong leadership in local government is important. I think that it is decreasing at an alarming rate and a lack of interest, and it is concerning. I think Heartland is an absolute, the absolute crown jewel of Lake Country. And I think that with strong leaders in place, it will continue to do so for the next several generations. And I am proud to be considered for this position. If any of you have any questions, I will do my best to answer them now. And if I can't answer them now, I'd be very happy to get back in contact with you via phone, email, I think the village has it, but if not, I can get it to you, so.
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, appreciate you.
Thank you, John.
I'll make a motion for the appointment of John Leishman to the Police and Fire Commission.
It's been moved and seconded to approve John Leishman to the Police and Fire Commission. Any discussion?
Has anyone been appointed for the president and vice president of that Police, Commission, Fire Commission?
I believe that the last meeting, they took the officer. I believe that they, I could be wrong. I didn't verify, do you know?
I believe they, they did decide upon that.
They did officer elections last meeting?
Yes.
Yeah. Part of the reason that I know that is it's a question that came up. But if someone, and this is not towards you, John, but if someone was coming in so new, I think that it would be best that they abstain from that because they need to learn the ropes. Even if they were eager, it's like get a year under your belt first. I do want to, and I'm sorry that I don't have the date here, but this person will be serving through the term that was for the other person, so they would have to get reappointed. I believe it's through next year. That's my, it's on the village website, but I believe there's one more year, and then it would have to get reappointed. And then just so you do know, and the board knows, this is the only one we have like this that's a five-year appointment. It's a long, it's for a dedicated person that, that wants to be on for a good long haul, so. Does it? That's, it's a five-year. Yep. I just wanted everybody to have all of this. So all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion carries. Congratulations, thank you very much. They will be in contact with you. Tonight, you will have to sign your oath, and we're almost done. So if you don't mind just holding off and then you can come up and sign it after, would that be okay? Perfect. With that item, we're done with normal agenda items where we get on to announcements. So let's go around the horn.
Darlene, I would like to thank you, congratulate you on your retirement. You did a lot for the DPW, and we truly appreciate that. The American Legion donated a thousand dollars to pay for the utilities at Nixon Park. They did so last year as well. So that covers the water sewer and electric at the Hardball Canteen. So we want to thank the American Legion for that. That's a great donation. And one other thing is if you're looking to donate some time, we have some holes open for our hometown celebration, bartending, selling tickets this Friday and Saturday. Just reach out to our rec director, Sarah, if you would. Thank you.
Darlene, again, congratulations. We're very excited for you. For our staff updates, we'd just like to recap June seventeenth and eighteenth. That's, our department responded to several events. On the seventeenth of June, at eleven P M., Heartland officers flagged down by a group of citizens in front of one-eleven East Capitol Drive. Upon arrival, officers contacted citizens gathering around an unresponsive unconscious man on the ground. Further investigation revealed that the subject was assaulted by a known suspect outside the bar. The victim was transported to a local hospital and is in critical but stable condition. As a result of this incident, multiple officers and a supervisor were called in to assist. The suspect was identified and arrested later in the day. He was locked up at the Waukesha County Sheriff's Department jail, and our victim is still in the hospital fighting for his life. On June eighteenth, so that same evening at twelve-twenty-nine A M., Lieutenant Sabaniak was then dispatched for mutual aid to the area of West Capitol and Palmer Drive to assist in handling of a stolen vehicle, where the Delfield Police Department and Heartland Police Department assisted the Sheriff's Department in a high-risk stop. There was a second car driven by the daughter of the suspect who tried to interfere with the stop when they were dealing with the complexity of the high-risk stop. In that same evening, at two forty-eight A M., they responded to a drug overdose. A male subject was located by his girlfriend in the hallway of his apartment complex, agonely breathing. Both responding Heartland officers and Minister Narcan to help bring back the subject to a stable breathing and back to regain consciousness. The suspect, or I'm sorry, subject was transported to a local hospital for further treatment and evaluation. So a busy night that evening of the seventeenth and eighteenth. Village employees continuing to meet and plan for the hometown celebration this weekend. Officer Wendago completed instructor development course in preparation to become a defense and arrest tactics instructor. We recently also completed a second quarter firearms at the Village of Conawak Range. Additionally, Additionally, the police department received a $2,601 grant to go towards our squad camera program through the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Mutual Insurance. And lastly, surely not least, Detective Paula Hoffa received an award from the International Association of Arson Investigators, Wisconsin chapter regarding an arson investigation she started in 2018, which led to a conviction to a suspect related in that case.
Thank you.
I just want to congratulate Darlene on your retirement, you'll be truly missed. As my first time on here, a few years back, you made it very easy to transition in that, so much appreciated, but we will have some big shoes that we're going to have to fill, so enjoy your retirement, but as I said, I retired back in 2016 for a short stint, so I'm sure you'll be back.
I'm actually going to make an announcement, I know.
Good, finally, first time.
First and last time. I just wanted to say thank you to the board, this board and previous boards, I want to thank you also to go out to the village staff and all the residents for the support that I've received during my years here. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve here, it's a wonderful community, and I wish nothing but the best for the village moving forward. It's a great place, so keep it up.
We'll see you soon.
Yeah, exactly.
Congratulations, Darlene.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darlene.
Darlene, I guess my first announcement will be saying congratulations and thank you for everything, to, to piggyback on what, on what Rick said and what many others have said, you did make it easy, I remember when I came in, you carry things through, you were diligent about it, and even with helping anybody as we newly got elected, getting us set up with our books and things like that, from the League of Municipalities, that made it better and easier to be an elected official, but also even, even that day, you had to come in on a Sunday and change the agenda, because I forgot something, and you had to get it on within, before, 24 hours before the meeting, and you did it, and I was like, oh, cool. But, I mean, there's a lot of times that you really went above and beyond, but your work on the hometown parade, I do want to say, sometimes people don't realize how much time and effort you put into that, and you start working on it, literally it ends, and two months later, you start working on the next one, and it turns out really cool because of your hard work. There's a lot of things that go unnoticed, I mean, the elections, we just kind of take for granted, because you make it run so smooth, so thank you for everything you've done for Heartland, but for each one of us as individuals, and just being a great person, thank you. It's been wonderful to be with you, and while it sucks that you're leaving, you deserve it.
Thank you, thank you.
And I'm jealous. The other announcements I have, related to hometown celebration, so this is the first time this is going to happen in Heartland in some time. We're going to have a party that's going to start, well, some people will start at 7:00 AM on Friday, because they'll go and put tarps all over the place at Nixon Park, please don't take my spot, should already be wired off by DPW by then, I'm kidding, no, in all seriousness, but I mean, about four, 3:00 on Friday, Heartland's going to be rocking, and it's probably not going to stop until about 8:00 on Sunday, and some will even go longer than that. So I do want to stress being smart, but having fun, that is possible, it's a fine line, but it's possible. There will be a lot of PD around, there will be a lot of fire around, there will be a lot of DPW around, and if anybody gets stupid, it'll be handled quickly and swiftly, but it's a very exciting time, hopefully no one goes overboard and does get stupid, but it's an exciting time, we've been pushing for this for a long time. Saturday had gotten to be a little dead, it used to be service organizations that were kind of running that weekend, and now it's more of a municipal thing to keep it going on, nothing, it was awesome that the service organizations were doing it, but we're trying to create more of a carnival-type atmosphere for the whole weekend, so we start off on Friday, Stetson and Lace will be down at Nixon Park, Beer Garden will be open, and I have no doubt that it'll be a good time, if I'm not mistaken, Kiwanis will be down there selling food.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday. Saturday morning, there's a car show, it starts at 8:00, so you get done at midnight on, well, or 11:00 on, on Friday, and you got to get back up and get going at 8:00 AM on Saturday, and that's the car show. Okay, there's a car show, Stetson and Lace will be playing Friday night, and then on Saturday night, car show, and then, I totally forgot about fireworks, but everybody knows that's happening, and then Bella Kane will be playing, and then, so we all get done at midnight again, and then you got to be up by 8:00 to set up for your parties, for hometown parade, and then hometown parade gets started, and everybody gets flowing around 11:00, parade setup happens, that kicks off at 1:30, and then we all go, then on that day, American Legion does have events over there like they typically do, the Beer Garden will also be open on Sunday over at Nixon Park, and hopefully, I'm guessing, by around 6:00 or 7:00, everybody will be kind of done, I think their bodies will be kind of done, and then we kind of hopefully took off of work on Monday or something, so that you can recover, but we're going to have a party, and hopefully everybody will be smart, but this is actually all about celebrating Heartland, celebrating your neighbors, having a good time rolling out the barrel, but having a good time, and I am extremely excited about it, and I want to say thank you to Darlene, yourself, I want to say thank you to everybody that's on the park board, I want to say thank you to DPW, PD, and fire, everybody that's about to put this much time into this, it is not without well over 100 people putting time into this, and $60,000 in donations to make this happen. But the village board, I commend all of you, you are willing to say, yes, let's move forward with this, we think we'll get the donations, Sarah did, with the help of many other people, but Sarah did it, so kudos to her, but let's rock it, and let's have a good time, we're on the map, and it's going to be, you know, as long as God holds that rain off, we're good to go.
We've got a massive tent to cover for the rain.
We do have a massive tent to cover for the rain, but the other events, we're hoping, but I think it's going to be a really good time, this is the first time Heartland's done this in the last time, this isn't trying to honor Heartland's history, because there did used to be tons of weekends events that went on all weekend, that's why I kind of just rattled them all off. It's very exciting for Heartland, we used to have this, where there's not like fireworks on Friday, it's dead on Saturday, and then we kick it again Sunday, we're going to go all weekend long, and I think it's really, really exciting, and I think this village is worth celebrating for all three of those days, so let's have a good time, and if you see a DPW worker, a village staff member, a police officer, or a firefighter, reach out and shake their hand, because they are working their butts off to make this possible, just so other people can have a good time. Tim, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that before Bella Kane, we do have two opening acts as well.
Oh, wonderful, could you name those, or do you know?
Devon Huckstep, I believe, is the early act, and then After Hours is after Devon, and then Bella.
Okay, so music starts then at what time?
14:00.
4:00.
4:00, okay, so music starts at 4:00, and then Bella Kane will kick off at 8:00.
Yep.
Okay, perfect, one, and again, the Beer Garden will be open, so those will be just pounding, they'll have plenty of barrels. And there's beer being sold in the tent, too, so there's no way where Heartland doesn't run out of beer, doesn't happen.
And to Mr. Felkner's point about signing up for bartending, is there something online where people can see the schedules so that they can plug in, or?
Just call Sarah, she'll fill you in every single open slot she's got, no, I'm kidding.
She will.
I don't know that for sure.
Sarah, okay.
You can call her, she's got a, she can send you an email that has the schedule on it.
She sent, she sent one Saturday, I believe, with signup sheets for those Friday and Saturday, schedule like, I think, Friday is in, or Saturdays, Friday's in red, Saturday's in blue or black or something, so.
Great, sounds good. You have anything?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Do you, either of you have anything for announcements? Nothing?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn the meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
This meeting's adjourned.